At the city council ward session December 12th, city attorney Catherine Brotherton.
Counselor Semple, your motion to substitute would be appropriate at this time.
I move to substitute Thomas Hura for interim Ward Seven. He's an amazing young person. I'm really looking forward to working with him. We often say how we want more diversity in the council and he's young. He represents Asian and LGBTQ populations. He's smart, dedicated and persistent. Keeps trying to be in a place where he can actually help the world to become better. He's been through many on the ground, literally life experiences. He's lived in Ward Seven almost all of his life and yet he has traveled outside the state also. I think that he's open and has an independence in his perspectives that would allow him to actually reach out and to hear the different people in Ward Seven. It's a complicated ward. And I think he would come in truly open to learning more and being responsive. He already knows quite a lot about the ward and about Eugene. I think this is an incredible opportunity for us and we should grab it. Please support him.
Uh, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I, I want to go on record saying I, I wish I had voted to give him an interview. I think that would have been a better outcome. And I didn't, so I can only speak for myself saying I wish I had. I did call him last week and we had a very good conversation for at least half an hour, forty-five minutes to get to know one another and talk a bit. And I thought he was a really good guy.
With that fourth vote, Thomas qualified for the council interviewer and is simulated and assumed meeting December thirteenth. Thomas answered counselors questions within the same thirty minutes given to the other applicants with four votes. Mayor Lucy Viness.
Thank you all again for joining us. And with that, I'll call this special meeting of the city council to order. Uh, tonight's meeting is an opportunity for council to hear from selected applicants to the interim Ward Seven City Council appointment. Each interview will be thirty minutes in length. The candidates will present their opening statement to council and then each counselor will ask a question. If there is time available at the end, I will give council time to ask a follow-up question or two. Before we begin, I would like to thank the community members who took the time uh to apply for this uh for this important role. And so, thank you very much for joining us today and um and I'll give you an opportunity to begin with your opening statement. And then we're, the, the counselors will in alphabetical order, ask you their specific questions.
Well, thank you so much. I'm very pleased to participate in the opportunity to answer the interview questions. I know that Counselor Clark graciously went on the record saying he'd be willing to say he, I should have been interviewed in his view. And I'm pleased to give council the opportunity to respond directly to the questions on video in roughly the same format. Um, so my name's Thomas Hura. Um, Thomas Hura is also a fine way to say it. Um, and I have lived in the Eugene community for over twenty-two years. I came here when I was just about two years old from Hamamatsu, Japan. And uh, my father grew up in Hood River and went to University of Oregon and loved it in Eugene, but thought it was a wonderful place to raise a family. And my mother is from uh Japan. They met there and uh I was very grateful to move straight into the River Road community. And I have lived uh in Ward Seven for over twenty years, very proudly, very um very much a participant in civic engagement as well as just um K through twelve. Uh, being very involved as a student and being a student uh in student governmental all four years of high school. And then really finding that some of those connections are still important now in my more mature professional life. As, as well as the fact that I have been uh pursuing a master's degree in leadership in higher education through Southern Oregon University in an online program. So I'm very committed to student affairs and I have a long history in uh helping students uh achieve with their college applications and with uh personal crises in their lives. And um just really, really um believe that education is a very key um part of our community. Uh, even though the city of Eugene doesn't have as direct of a purview on it, I, I have a lens that is within education, within the performing arts as well. I'm in the uh recently elected vice chair of the Community Center for the Performing Arts, which is the uh nonprofit that governs the WOW Hall. So a site on the natural, National Register of Historic Places. Really very honored to serve there as well as on the Human Rights Commission for the City of Eugene, the Willamette Natural Area Citizen Planning Committee, as well as the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. So um, City of Eugene uh government has something that I've paid close attention to for literally my whole life. And uh, I've, I've genuinely felt now that it's a great time to step up in this appointment process. Because I find that honestly, it's difficult for um candidates who are a little out of left field or a little um don't come from some of the conventional kind of backing that um political um successful electoral candidates often come from in our, in our society. Uh, they have a hard time winning in elections. So I really like the opportunity to talk to council and pursue this appointment and step forward to serve the ward that has been my home and that I love deeply very much.
Okay, we'll begin with Counselor Clark.
In a recent city-sponsored community survey, nearly three quarters of the people who answered said they thought that the city was heading in the wrong direction. Do you tend to agree or disagree? And why? Why not?
I've lived in Eugene for so long, I feel that the world is heading in many of the wrong directions. And I really understand and appreciate the willingness for people to speak about what they find is broken in the city government or very, very unresponsive to some of their needs day to day. Ward Seven is uniquely capable of understanding why the city of Eugene um ha- how it responds to a difference of um communities and um whether it's ideologies or different demographic groups because the ward is so diverse. It comprises, see, I'm really glad I'm doing this, not reading off a paper for, for only most of this, right? Just kind of keeping it loose. It comprises Santa Clara, River Road, the Whittaker and some of Trainsong. And a lot of areas in the ward are not incorporated in the city, but still really feel that they want to have their voice heard and um and that, that matters. Um, so I do think that um there have been many instances where people have felt that there's a sort of, whether it's a predictability or a gridlock on council, they feel that council is going to do what council does. Um, regardless of what their input is and what they want to see out of, out of the government. And anytime you have a scenario where there's a large visible disconnect between the people and um at least their perception of, of, of how the government is really talking to them and, and communicating with them outside of wanting their vote. Um, communicating them with them about projects that are going to deeply affect River Road, deeply affect the climate. Um, and I'm very uh concerned as well on so many fronts, which is why I ran for mayor in twenty twenty. Um, and came in second out of seven candidates in that primary. Um, and ran against the incumbent Mayor Lucy Viness, who I now have a very friendly relationship with, and interviewed on my podcast, although I haven't released it. So I'm really responsive, I think, to those concerns. I've shown that I'm um one of the most responsive applicants. I believe Janet Ayers and I were kind of determined to be the most responsive applicants in the Ward Seven Neighbors United forum. So uh, W A R D seven uh, U Nited uh, at dot org, I believe you can see responses that I've been answering from the get-go. Um, and feel really grateful to try to be that counselor who really listens to Ward Seven. So I, I, I can understand where they're coming from when they say Eugene's going in the wrong direction.
Thank you so much. Next is Counselor Evans.
Yeah, I have a kind of a, a two-part question. In your view, what are the top three issues slash challenges facing Eugene currently? And what strategies would you advocate for in addressing those issues slash challenges?
All the issues are interconnected, but for the sake of these three bullet points, I will say that um housing and homelessness is an extraordinarily um deep and comprehensive issue in our city, that one that I've seen for my whole life, but that I've especially seen become um a real, real challenge for all of us uh who want to feel that we live in a place that's compassionate, that we live in a place that's safe, that we live in a place where you don't have to see despair all the time. And that, that despair isn't um, isn't perpetuated. So um, housing and homelessness is a big issue and uh I, as somebody who, my father was homeless for ten years. I experienced homelessness um for a period of time in twenty nineteen. Um, and I, I understand a lot of the, the issues that are at play, um as well as having uh experienced, you know, uh been experienced uh when I was homelessness, when I was homeless, someone stole from my vehicle while I was in it, sleeping, you know? It was, it's Eugene, Eugene is in a place where um, and that was just too bad because it was several hundred dollars worth of electronic equipment. And I was so frustrated because I was still employed, but I was, but I was homeless. So um, there, there is a wide range of solutions, but certainly um increasing the, the opportunity to, for people to stabilize themselves uh if they're dealing with um drug and mental health issues, as well as um just all sorts of traumas. And having a trauma-informed response that, that doesn't compromise on um accountability for how people behave in public. Because um, we, everybody deserves to feel safe in Eugene. So that kind of connects to the second issue, which is just neighborhood concerns and quality of life. I spoke to that a little bit there, but also just making sure we're good neighbors and really listening to one another. And that's something that council and the mayor and the city government can, can, can set a tone that says we really genuinely listen to and value all of our constituents, even people who come to us angrily, people who come to us praising us. Uh, it's, it's, should all be considered as um valid. And um, the, the third issue that I would say is economic viability of the ward. It's, it needs to be seen as a desirable place to have small businesses. And I don't believe it's that way in so many instances now, although there is thriving commerce that varies from the Blair Boulevard area and all the active nightlife and, and breweries and, you know, things that make Eugene uh have a special, special sense of community there. But going up north as well as towards um, you know, areas where there's more industrial uh and more retail businesses um that are also uh in need of, you know, some counselor who understands their needs and the needs of the whole community. So um, economic viability also comprises uh decent wages and decent job opportunities here in, for Euginians. Because we really need um people to be able to live and afford to live in Eugene and afford to live happily in Eugene and not want to leave, like so many of my friends have over the years, like I did temporarily. And I don't plan to do it again. I love, I love Eugene. Uh, and uh, even though um it's got a lot of problems. I think we can, we can really get disparate groups or groups that have felt that they are disconnected from one another to the same table and talk and meaningfully advance change. So those are my three issues.
Thank you very much. Counselor Groves?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is two parts as well. Uh, Ward Seven is one of the city's most diverse wards in terms of opinion, ideological perspectives and issues of concern. How will you balance these different perspectives? And what will you, what steps will you take to establish yourself as the Ward Seven City Counselor? Also, how will you be responsive to what are sometimes opposing points of view?
Um, I grew up in this community, uh, I think playing sports and that actually taught me a lot of the value of people who I don't agree with on a lot of issues or people that want to work towards a common goal, even if we don't have to agree on everything outside of that. Uh, played um Babe Ruth baseball, which I know C- Counselor Groves has been involved in. I played it in North Eugene and, and um a lot of those formative experiences, growing up in a community that genuinely felt kinder, more collaborative, more communicative, had better journalism at the time, no offense, John Q. Thanks so much for doing this, but really it's an example of how some of the press and the journalism in our community. Um, independent folks sometimes have to step up because with all respect to um corporate outlets and um other the alternative weekly presses and, and things like that, we used to have a community where people knew what was going on locally a lot better. You would think that with advancements in information technology, we would come together more and understand what's going on more in our backyard. But it seems we have a more fractured information landscape. We don't agree on the same facts anymore. Counselor Groves and anyone who is concerned about this like me. So um, I have a unique opportunity as somebody with kind of a foot in a lot of different worlds. Uh, somebody who's, who's mixed race, somebody who has been very low income, but also been the recipient of a scholarship that made me very economically privileged on a couple of occasions, which I'll talk about um later with my trip to, to Manhattan, New York um that occurred a few years ago. Um, I, I really have the ability to listen to the ward because when they're talking about stories from their families, I have stories from my family that are very good parallels or that, that make me connect deeply on a human level with what they're talking about. So I um, it's gonna, it's gonna involve bringing, bringing people to the table and really being present throughout the ward constantly. And I'm very committed to that, as I've already shown.
Thank you. Uh, next is Counselor Keating.
Thanks, Mayor. Learning from one's mistakes is key in, in any arena. While we, we've heard a lot about your vision and values, what is your greatest failure? And what have you learned from that experience that prepares you to best serve residents of Ward Seven?
Uh, this is a difficult question. Um, I wrote down a little bit of a guideline because sometimes when I walk, speak off the cuff about these difficult and traumatic experiences, it's hard for me. So uh, I am half Japanese and while that's not my biggest mistake, it's something I had no control over. There remains in Japanese culture a stigma around mental health and health, mental health diagnoses have run in my family very deeply and for generations. And um, in my, you know, my immediate family, I, I, with huge respect to them, I love them. And, and when I tell my own story, I try to be respectful to everybody involved. But I made a bad choice in twenty eighteen that involved going um to grad school. Um, I had taken, uh, I'd spent a year in Eugene after getting my bachelor's, working in hospitality and was having a really good time recovering from um some difficulties I had in college. Uh, because when I was in college, I was really stressed out and some friends of mine and I experienced cyberbullying. And two of my friends, Luigi Trenti Peroli and Siddharth Ramakrishnan, both took their own lives. And that was really traumatic and difficult for, for me, not because I was extraordinarily, um, not like they were my, my two best friends. But when you have people that you lose and you imagine, what could I have done better? What could I have done differently? Um, and especially from having grown up around, around mental health and feeling like I could have seen the signs. Um, but in that time, um, like my, my GPA was okay. I applied to a bunch of grad programs. And actually, honestly, part of this may have to do with my, my background of commitment, but also from the unique identities that I hold. Asian-American uh, you know, men and they tend to be underrepresented in uh, in education, both of those groups or, or people who are, who are not women. Um, and we, of course, date women in, in positions as well. They're doing extraordinary job. Um, but I um was able to get into all these grad programs and I got into Duke, Michigan, USC, Oregon, Columbia, Penn, Northwestern. And uh, I went and, and followed the, the pressure of some of my family that, that I think was completely understandable. Um, that they just wanted me to get the best education possible. So I went to the most prestigious school I could, which was Columbia, Ivy League school I'd visited before, counseling students who were also striving to go to um prestigious programs. And um, it was, I, I had known that it didn't seem like the right fit for me, but I went anyway. And uh, I was not as successful in the program because I grew up in North Eugene. Uh, I'm not blaming it on that. I brought, I'm accountable for my, my own shortcomings, but the environment was so different. Um, it was, the air quality was awful. I was right in the middle of Manhattan. Um, I didn't, you know, uh, I was encouraged not to get it, not to get a job and to focus on my school by the scholarship agency that was helping me. But I could hardly afford to eat and um I, I did not do well in my classes. I got, I took a few credits and then took a, a medical leave because of the, the isolation and, and mental strife that I, that I was experiencing. Um, and that was in twenty eighteen and I came back in twenty nineteen. And my family was really disappointed and worried about my scholarship, which I never lost and I still have it today. But they really um felt that I had, I had, I had failed and uh, I, I can understand that perception. But uh, I was, I was trying to focus on my health and uh, I came back and um, I didn't feel safe in my home at the time. So I, I uh, and I sort of got kicked down. I, I went into my car and I was living in a electric vehicle, a Nissan Leaf around town. You know, when, when Counselor Keating asked what's the biggest mistake, you know, that's, it's, it was, it was a very difficult time. And I, but I'm very sensitive to the um, the many different circumstances that can lead to people being unhoused. Um, and you know, I, I am a story and so many people are stories of people who have recovered very robustly and, and even quickly from mental health um and have understood themselves better and understood their coping strategies. Because what the, what the mistake was fundamentally was that I didn't take care of my own health. I was uh, I was a, you know, a person who was not getting enough sleep, not um getting enough nutrition, not drinking enough water, that, you know, just basic things that are being out there alone in the big city. I, I did not do a good job of, of that. So when I came back, um, I started working hard on a mental health recovery program and successfully completed it, showing years of, years that I, for, for years that I prioritized my wellness. I have a great partner who supports me, even though um, uh, you know, I, I, some people think I'm rude or even hostile just because I'm passionate and concerned about Eugene. Um, so I regret not taking good care of my health then, uh, to lead up to that, that difficult time. And when I came back, I was very um upset at injustice in the world and I, and I went to give public comments at, at um, you know, local meetings and I think it, it substantiated an idea that I still have to be accountable to now and, and try to dissuade people from, which is that I'm kind of a wacko or that I'm a little erratic. Or truly what's frustrating as well is people, I think, have, have taken the opportunity to say that I'm just, they should discount my qualific- my application because of prior experiences with mental health where uh, I, I took responsibility and I didn't, I didn't ever hurt anybody or anything. It was just erratic behavior that needed to be corrected. And I'm so grateful that I've, for several years, I'm, I've, I've been in uh, a leader in the community and demonstrated, you know, that just like um recovering from a broken ankle or just like recovering from a physical ailment, recovery is possible from mental health. And um, and I know a lot of the, the warning signs, the coping skills now through robustly participating and even having been seen as a leader in some of the groups that I participated in to help other people who have struggled with mental health. Um, it's something that the city is not as directly involved in, uh, because mental health is run by the county. Um, but you know, I um, it, it affects my daily life. It, it taught me more about um being on the autism spectrum and um, I, I've, I've just learned so much more about how to um present myself in a way that doesn't undermine my um intellect and my credibility and my ability to lead, simply because I'm passionate. Ward Seven is really passionate and I, and I look forward, if I'm able to serve, to people being very vigorous and very upset at council meetings and being able to try to be somebody who's really, really listening to them. Um, so I'm really fully transparent about my record. There's nothing that I'm afraid to be asked. I'm very proud of my, my, my record as somebody who's, who grew up in a home full of unfortunately abuse and um, and fear and um using that as a story to show that I'm actually really well in tune with the difficulties of living in our community in a turbulent time, in a time where we're feeling economically. Um, opportunities are less and less here for Euginians, for people who've, who've grown up here and, and worked here and want to raise their kids here happily. So that's, that's the story of my biggest mistake, but I'm very, very proud of how I've responded to it.
Thank you. Counselor Semple?
The job of counselor will be more demanding than you realize. No matter how much you think you understand council, issues, people, it will take immense time, energy and attention that you will no longer have to give to your own life. Family, friends, other work, your home, hobbies and more. What things in your life fulfill you? What demands do you have on your time? How will you manage these challenges and keep yourself physically, mentally and emotionally healthy?
I think I have about seven minutes left of the interview, so I'll, I'll keep this fairly brief. Um, because I do think my um ability to take on a wide variety of tasks with both depth and breadth is demonstrated by my record and um I genuinely enjoy being busy. But I also enjoy taking walks and unwinding, leaving my phone at home sometimes and walking through some of the natural areas and the bike path and, and you know, throughout the Ward Seven, there's a, there's a lot of wonderful, wonderful places to stroll and um, listen to music as well. Um, and creating music is a very important part of my life too. I create hip-hop and I create rock music and I take clients, recording clients uh in my own studio, Rabioli Road Studios and uh, sort of run that like a small business. So I'm really um gonna be tested, of course. There's gonna be a lot of eyes on whoever is appointed here, but I feel very competent and capable with um, again, keeping, keeping all my um, knowing that, that my health comes first and the uh, my relationship with my partner Haley comes first and is a very centering and grounding and wonderfully supportive relationship we have for over two years. Um, and she's a business owner in Santa Clara as well. She owns a piano studio. And um, so I have a lot of wonderful, wonderful ways to unwind, to take care of my needs. And I also get that genuine passion to respond to an email from a constituent, which I've done in the Human Rights Commission, you know, at any hour. I, I, I know that that sounds um, that sounds like what it is, but I'm, I'm always thinking about what's going on in, in the community and always willing to, to connect with people. So uh, hopefully that wasn't too rambly. Again, I'll try to keep it short. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ye.
My question is, uh, the council's vision, values and goals includes being an equitable, efficient and accountable municipal government. What does equity mean to you in this context and what would you expect from an equitable government?
So um, I think going through the college that I went to, which was very progressive, um, and kind of feeling like, whoa, I see so many sides of these issues. Sometimes when we use social justice language, we make the mistake of believing that everybody um knows it. And, and sometimes people don't know what equitable means. Um, so an equitable community to me means that everybody has the resources that they need um to, to thrive. That's basically what it comes down to. And people talk about the difference between equality being, everybody gets exactly the same measure of, of uh, everybody, everybody gets the same accommodation or service. Whereas sometimes people who are differently abled or, or who experience, you know, any number of specific needs will need um that kind of direct support. So um, it's, it's really a, a large part of my life's work. I talked about my college guidance career before. I, I um was successful in getting all fifty of my students in my caseload, fifty out of fifty of them, forty-nine of whom happened to be students of color, but all of whom were low-income students from around the country. I helped in them and their brilliance, not mine, but supporting them through the application process, which is so stressful. So many of them are first-generation college students and all of them were admitted to one of Barron's most selective colleges and universities, most competitive. So that, that's basically Ivy League, Stanford and uh MIT and uh, and some of the other nice liberal arts colleges. So I know that our, our leadership pipeline in this country has a history that is related to the fact that not everybody's been included at the table. So we have to consider that. And um, you know, I think that everybody should have been interviewed who was, who was qualified. I think that everybody should have a chance to hear from the diversity within the applicant pool. I'm grateful to have this chance to talk now and I'm going to continue to work to make our community equitable.
Thank you. And uh, last but not least, Counselor Zalika.
I have a three-part question on climate change for you. Uh, in a survey done in the city, seventy-five percent of Eugene residents agreed that quote, "Climate change requires much stronger regulations of greenhouse gas emissions." Do you agree or disagree with that statement and why? Part one. Part two is when it comes to funding for climate change product, do you see them on par with other essential services like the library or parks or police or fire? Or do you think the, the funding is more discretionary and we would need to fund these as money becomes available? And then finally, how do you see alternative transportation options generally fitting into our, as part of a climate change, specifically River Road area?
Okay, so that's three questions and I don't have much time, but, but people can reach out to me for any kind of clarification. People already have from both sides of environmental concerns. First question, uh, should we uh regulate and limit the use of fossil fuels? Um, when we talk about regulations, I think we are talking about something that obviously needs to be phased out, phased out over time and can't uh, and uh, is something we rely on every day, but that we, we know is uh, is not sustainable. And so uh, when I speak to a specific regulation, it'll be based on what the city uh has put forward and what the motion is. Um, because when I talk, I would say the, the quick answer is yes, but, but we have so many concerns in our community that are interconnected. And we, and, and so I can't commit to a regulation in particular that I'm, that hasn't been presented in, in detail. So um, that's my question there. As far as city funding it, um, we, it absolutely should be a priority, priority in funding um, to be able to mitigate climate change, but it also has to be the continue, Eugene continues to be a leader, working with other communities because we all have to work really hard for, for that to occur. It can't just be us. Um, and, but that doesn't mean we can't be leaders. Um, and uh, but we have to look at the twenty million dollars of budget shortfall and also look at um, the fact that uh, you know, economic viability is already, is already um really concerning, I think, in our community for people who are from here. And so um, yes, I, I, I totally uh believe in um concerns around the climate um, and, and trying to fund solutions um at the municipal level, but probably more so at the state, federal level. Um, and, but really trying to make sure that the, just the needs of the ward are actually understood diversely throughout the ward as we proceed with, with anything, because um, we need to move with, with a pace that recognizes the, the um climate reality that we're, that my generation has inherited. And we also need to really be aware of the repercussions of anything we do. If it will have um adverse effects that might even come around to damage some of the most vulnerable people, people who uh, you know, we need to be sure about our, our procedures. And so I know that's kind of vague. And the third question uh was about transportation options and I grew up um loving. And I grew up loving River Road, biking all around Long River Road. Didn't get my license until I was nineteen, riding buses a lot. And public transportation has a legacy of being strong in Eugene, but also is controversial for totally understandable reasons, I think. And I have some concerns with MX. I grew up with MX being a big hot topic and seeing that around and also knowing that the ridership, especially throughout like the Glenwood area, is very low. And so, we need to think really holistically. We've got LTD that opened the Santa Clara bus station. And I kind of wish that there was an ability to take care of a lot of people's transport needs who are robust LTD because when we have LTD and MX and people have to pay for their LTD fare to get where they maybe from, you know, North Eugene, Santa Clara, down to somewhere closer latitude to latitudes of Broadway, to put it, the West Eleventh area to go horizontally east-west and then possibly up to Riverbend. MX serves people in really important ways. But, yeah, we have to really also make sure we're very communicative with the people that will be most effective before we put in policies that are going to literally affect where they can go, how and why.
Thank you so much. That is the end of our prepared questions. If someone has a follow-up question, I'll open the floor. Emily.
When you're not saving Eugene and the world, what do you like to do for fun?
Volunteering at WOW Hall shows. That's genuinely how I do it, but that's still part of my role here. So, I enjoy archery. My partner's going to get me a new bow. I haven't had a bow to shoot in a long time and I enjoy archery. So, I enjoy going out to near the J.C. Ponds Junction City area. And I like basketball. Any kind of target activity is good for dopamine. You know, you miss a little bit, then you adjust and then it feels good to make it.
Simulating thirty minutes of questions from city councilors. Ward Seven applicant Thomas Hira. This is John Ketsel Quaddell Murray for the whole community news.